Good evening, everyone. Good to see you after our break. It seems like it's been forever since we were here in our chambers. But it is 7:30 on Tuesday, September 2nd, and I'm calling this meeting, this regular meeting of the 77th Monrovia City Council to order. And our invocation this evening is from Tricia Hellman, and that will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Larry Spicer. Tricia.
Thank you for having me. Dear Heavenly Father, Mother, we thank you for your many blessings on this beautiful city of Monrovia and its citizens. May your almighty power govern these proceedings. May your infinite intelligence and loving ever-present bring unity and wisdom to this chamber. May your infinite knowledge and understanding bring truth, honesty, and integrity to the words spoken here today. May your boundless grace bring humor and creativity to ideas presented here today. May your divine word provide guidance for righteous justice and judgment for this community and be an example for all, the good of all mankind. I know you are listening always. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hellman. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
May we please have roll call. It's Councilmembers Beldon.
Here.
Jimenez.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Mayor Potem, Dr. Kelly.
Here.
And Mayor Chevlin. Here. We did have, we met for closed session before this regular meeting, and I will ask our city attorney, Mr. Steele, to report out.
Thank you, Mayor. The members of the City Council met in closed session this evening prior to this meeting regarding the two items on the posted agenda. With regard to the CS2 item, the council took no reportable action. With regard to CS1, which is the settlement in seven pieces of litigation, class action litigation related to opioid drug providers, the council directed staff to opt-in to the proposed settlements.
Thank you very much. Then we will move on to our presentations and proclamations, and I'll start with PR1, which is recognition of the Volunteer Center of San Gabriel Valley for their support of the 2025 Summer Concerts in the Park. And our recipient is Macy Garcia from the Executive Director of the Volunteer Center, and we'll have Macy come on it. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We want to see your pretty, pretty face. And Sergio is going to read our certificate this evening.
In appreciation of your ongoing support of the 2025 Monrovia Summer Concert Series, your organization and all of the volunteers were essential to the program in setting up and cleaning up before and after each event over the course of a 12-week program. Your contributions were invaluable in making these community gatherings possible. Thank you. Dated the second day of September 2025, signed by our mayor, Becky Chevlin, and the rest of our City Council, Mayor Potem, Tamla Kelly, councilmembers Edward Beldon, Larry Spicer, and myself. Thank you very much.
So Macy, do you have some words for us? And then, obviously, we have those beautiful flowers for you, and then we'll do a little photo op at the end.
Of course, I have some words. Thank you so much, Tina and City Council, for this recognition. It means so much to us at the Volunteer Center, to be seen for what we do together with this community. So, thank you so much. And I want to share with everybody, just a little plug-in, Make a Difference Day, October 25th. We have a variety of projects. We still need volunteers, so there's still time to register, to volunteer. You can go onto our website, vcsgv.org, or you can contact our office. We'll get you going. It's a really good event, so October 25th, mark your calendar. Thank you.
Yay. Okay, we'll come on down and give you your certificate and take it.
Well, as you're moving down, Mayor, I don't want to stop your plans here. I just wanted to add on a personal note. You know, Macy, as the Director of the Volunteer Center, does provide volunteers, but what a lot of people don't know is Macy herself needs to be there for each one of these programs and events. And so, on a personal note, she's giving up her time on the weekends and the holidays to make all this happen, and truly, we couldn't do it without you. So we just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Anything for the city. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a proclamation for the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and I wanted to read this proclamation. We don't have anyone specifically to give it to. There are many organizations that you can support regarding childhood cancer. We do have a very special one here in Monrovia, St. Baldry's, and I went and lifted a few comments from their website, but let me read the proclamation first. Whereas each year more than 400,000 children and youth under the age of 19 are diagnosed with cancer worldwide, and whereas childhood cancer is the number-one disease-related cause of death for children in the United States and many other countries, and whereas 2/3 of those who survive childhood cancer endure chronic health conditions from the toxic effects of cancer treatment, including secondary cancers and other life-threatening illnesses, and whereas the causes of childhood cancer are largely unknown and more study is needed to understand which treatments work best for children, and whereas cancer treatment for children often must differ from traditional adult treatments to take into account children's development needs and other factors. Now, therefore, I, Becky Chevlin, Mayor of the City of Monrovia, California, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer and Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Monrovia, and encourage the community to raise awareness about childhood cancer and lend strength to all children and parents who need it, dated the second day of September 2025. And again, I just wanted to highlight, there are lots of different organizations that research, specifically research foundations, National Pediatric Cancer Research Foundation, they're in Tampa, Florida, Pediatric Cancer Research Foundation in Irvine, California, the California, or the Children's Cancer Research Fund located in Minneapolis, Minnesota, St. Jude Children's Research Hospital in Memphis, Tennessee, and Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. But in particular, St. Baldry's Foundation is here in Monrovia at 1333 South Mayflower Avenue. And most people, when you hear about St. Baldry's, you immediately think of a bald head, and that's exactly what it is. Their fundraisers involve shaving heads. My husband happens to be in the audience this evening, and he's had his, he's shaved his head a few times for that event. Thank you, honey. But at any rate, filling the funding gap, more adults than kids get cancer. It's true. That's why governments and foundations fund more research for adult cancers, and we're all for finding cures for adults. But look closer. Adults, the average number of years of life lost to cancer for adults is 15. An average age at cancer diagnosis is 67. For children, the average number of years of life lost to cancer is 71 years, being that the average age at cancer diagnosis is six for children. And those years, we could, and those years, we could say they're the years when a kid could grow up, marry, have children of their own, create something beautiful the world has never seen, or even discover a cure for cancer. About 60% of all funding for drug development in adult cancers comes from pharmaceutical companies. For kids, almost none, because childhood cancer drugs are not profitable. At St. Baldry's Foundation, they do one thing, and they do it well. They fund childhood cancer research. Their mission is to find cures for childhood cancers and to give survivors long and healthy lives. St. Baldry's is the largest non-government funder of childhood cancer research grants. By funding cooperative research through the Children's Oncology Group, they give kids nationwide access to the very latest in research and clinical trials. Thanks to a grant review system that impresses the experts, they fund only the very best childhood cancer research. There's a big funding gap to be filled. They are proud of what they do for kids fighting cancer, but there's a big gap between the need for funding and the money available. At St. Baldry's alone, of the 30 million needed to fund every grant application that received an excellent score in June 2025 cycle, only 10 million was available to be granted. So at any rate, that, like I said, there are many organizations that you give to, but you're thinking local, and they do a lot of research at St. Baldry's here in Monrovia. And maybe, Dylan, we can add that to our, like, the weekly update and give people some information where they can donate. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we should have had a student government representative report this evening, but unfortunately, they couldn't make it. So we'll look forward to seeing them on the next meeting. And I'm not going to even attempt the last name, but her first name is Elsie, so we'll look forward to seeing Elsie on September 16th. In our Order of Business under RCC-5, my report, item A, Letter of Support for AB 715 Anti-Semitism Prevention in K-12 Education. That item is being polled this evening. There's some gymnastics going on in that, in our legislature, and so, not quite sure exactly what the status is of that, that bill, and so, we're, it's polled, and it will be monitored for, as to further amendments or what happens to that bill. Then on our consent, there aren't any other items, just that one then, Order of Business. And then, our consent calendar, which entails CC1 through CC10, are considered ordinary in business and can be enacted by one motion, and so unless there's something that needs to be polled or questions, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve CC1 through CC10. I'll second.
We have a motion, and a second, then, without objection, then the consent calendar is so approved. Okay. Now, we are at that point with our public comment portion, and thank you for coming here this evening to join us for our meeting. This is your opportunity to come forward and provide input on any items not on our agenda. And so, I do believe we do have some cards, and you will be given three minutes to speak this evening. So with that, I'll have Alice read the cards. And so, if you, if you do want to speak during public comment, be sure to fill out a card, and we'll be sure to hear you this evening. All right, beginning with Ally Seha.
Hello. Can I clarify how many minutes I have?
Three, three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ally Seha. I am a resident in Duarte, California, but as you know, like, Monrovia and Duarte are very close, are very close together, and I just want to start off by saying that I shop here. I go to downtown Monrovia. I'm very involved also in the city. And today, I'm here to talk about the tragic death of Roberto Carlos Montoya, which happened on August 14th, 2025, and it was a fatal incident in Monrovia, California, which is the Department of Homeland Security summary was not only inadequate, but it was dehumanizing, dishonest, and disgraceful. In their official account, DHS refers to Carlos Montoya simply as an unknown pedestrian, erasing his identity, his humanity, and the direct role that immigration enforcement played in his tragic death. Carlos Montoya was not an unknown pedestrian. He was a beloved father and a grandfather and a member of our community. He died fleeing a reckless, unnecessary, and unannounced immigration raid conducted by Border Patrol agents who descended on a Home Depot parking lot. This was here in Monrovia, the Home Depot that I and most of residents in Duarte, Monrovia, and Arcadia shop at. Where, and this happened where day laborers like Carlos gather every morning in search of work. They don't search for trouble. These men are not threats, they are workers, fathers, and neighbors. And so, we refuse to allow the government to sweep this under the rug. Carlos Montoya died as a direct result of an enforcement action that had no place in our communities. The entire premise of storming a day laborer, terrorizing him, like this is rooted in criminalizing poverty and immigration and immigration status, said Jose Madera. This is a director of the Pasadena Community Job Center. The day laborers were the ones that were very much involved after the Altadena fires. I watched them as they cleaned the Altadena fires, and now we see that day laborers are being persecuted and terrorized, and several have already been killed. I know, and two in Southern California. So today, we ask that, that you please stand with us and that you help us meet our demands, and a couple of those is that we demand an immediate investigation into these events leading to Carlos Montoya's death, but we also want to be able to memorialize him there at Home Depot. And you can read the other demands as well, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next is Sheri Lochner. Good evening, Sharon.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Lochner.
Or Sheri, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I like it in the drink.
And just set my timer so I know I've got three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sheri Lochner, and I was born and raised in Monrovia, and I lived here until I was 26, and then I moved away. I've been living in Australia my whole adult life. I've come back because my mom, Lorna Lochner, still lives in Monrovia, in the same house that I grew up in, and I've come back to care for her. So I know this community, and I know Southern California quite well. As my, the previous speaker, Ally, said, I too am upset, I'm outraged at the events that have taken place and the death of Roberto Carlos Montoya. I demand justice for Roberto Carlos Montoya. He was a human being. He was one of our community members, and for him to be treated the way he was and other day laborers is unconscionable. And so, I'm concerned because since the ICE raid, I have noticed, and other people in my group have also noticed, an increase in surveillance. This should be concerning for all Monrovians. There are FLOC cameras installed on public ground, on the corners of Huntington and Mountain Avenue, on the center divider of Evergreen and Mountain, along Duarte Road and Huntington Drive, on Mountain Avenue near the BMW dealership. There is also a FLOC camera outside of Maxwell Elementary School. These cameras track license plates, and then this information by FLOC, which is a company, is sent to a national database that other law enforcement agencies can subscribe to, law enforcement agencies like the FBI, like ICE, like the DHS. This should be concerning for all Americans, but let's just keep it local. So my questions are, why have those cameras been set up specifically in those areas? And there are two on the premises, when you, when you go into Home Depot, so on that eastern side, there's one at the south entrance as well. Why have those cameras been specifically set up? Does the City of Monrovia know about these cameras? And what involvement does the City of Monrovia have in assisting the federal government in this surveillance? And lastly, what steps is the Monrovia City Council going to take to inform the public of the installation of these cameras? Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanne Grant.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you today. It's my first time speaking at one of these things, so. I really come to you with a broken heart. I work for the Immigration Resource Center of San Gabriel Valley, and kind of our slogan is "All are welcome and all are beloved." And what that means is wherever a person has come from, however they got here, whoever they may be, they are welcome, they are welcome at the Immigration Resource Center. And not only are they welcome, they are beloved. They are our siblings, they are our brothers and sisters. So, last week, or last, a couple weeks ago, when we lost Roberto Carlos, we, we had a vigil, and many of you were there. And it was, it was a night of sorrow. It was a night of sadness. There were crosses, and we lit candles, we sang songs, there were many clergy members there, community members, I'm sure over 1,000 people there. And I've never seen anything like it in Monrovia. The entire Home Depot parking lot was filled, and there was so much grief. And I think it's so easy for us to forget that someone who may be poor, they may be a day laborer, they may be someone that we look past on a daily basis, that they are a human being. And what I worry about is that we're going to let this go by. And, you know, there was, there was an ICE raid today at Fashing's Car Wash in Arcadia. I was there, and four men were taken, and several others were hiding. Hiding. They were hiding. It breaks my heart that anyone should have to hide, and I feel that it is our duty to protect each other, not just the people who look like us, not just the people that we already know, but all of us. That's what community is. So I would appreciate if all of you could consider that when you're thinking about Roberto Carlos and the other immigrants who are in our community and the refugees who are in our community, that they need us and we need them. So, thank you for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Francisco Garcia.
Good evening, members of the City Council, Mayor, and fellow citizens, residents. I too am here to speak to this issue so that the life of Roberto Carlos Montoya Valdez will not be in vain, and there's something we can do as a community and as a city. I appreciate seeing many of you at the vigil a few weeks ago. It's a vigil that I helped organize with many other, you know, community leaders and faith leaders and just concerned people. You know, as a person of faith and as a, as a pastor, I'm reminded constantly of the scriptures that call us to see human dignity in every person that we meet, and there are very specific urgings calling us to love the neighbor, to love the stranger, which is often the phrase that is used when speaking of someone who is from another place and a migrant, a traveler. We're reminded to greet the foreigner residing among you as your native-born, to love them as yourself, for you were foreigners in Egypt, and I am the Lord, your God, as it says in Leviticus. In Hebrews, it says, "Do not neglect to show hospitality to strangers, for by doing that, some have entertained angels without knowing it." And so, our tradition is steeped in this call to love and to see all as neighbor. And as a city, we are called to live into these values of recognizing human dignity regardless of citizenship status, and so I want to urge us to do something. We as the, I'm here not representing just myself, but a coalition of faith leaders and community representatives, we want to work with you, with the City Council, and with our elected officials and other leadership to figure out what can we do as a city. We understand that what's happening is affecting the entire region, right? Monrovia is, is one but of many cities across the Southland that is being impacted by these attacks, kidnappings, and many times by masked agents, that we have no idea what agency they are from, if they are from an agency at all. And so, we want accountability. We want a full investigation by the state. We want Roberto's life to be recognized and memorialized here in the city, but we want those who are living, our immigrant relatives, our neighbors, to know that this is a city that welcomes them, that sees them, that values them, and that they feel safe here, regardless of a piece of paper. And so, we want to urge you and ask of you to do something, to do something bold. Many cities are taking action around these issues to, to let their immigrant residents and those who work and live here know that they are seen, loved, and welcomed, that they will be protected in the face of these increasing attacks that are happening in all places. And so, we do, we want to know what, what have you already done, right? What steps have you taken? And then what steps can we take together? And we're committed to partner with you to see this thing through. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Taylor. Good evening.
Hi, Melissa. Hi. I am here to speak also on August 14th, as they have mentioned. ICE enacted an illegal raid on day laborers in our community. Over 11 people were kidnapped, and one man, Roberto Carlos Montoya, lost his life running away from ICE, which, I should still mention, has yet to make national news. So, that makes me ask myself, how many other people have died trying to escape these raids in fear of ICE that we don't know about? Technically, we know that ICE is on, this is, this year is on track to be the deadliest year in immigration detention. There have been 14 deaths so far in the camps, and how many other deaths- And how many other deaths have happened caused by ICE? As Jeanne mentioned, four people were kidnapped today in Arcadia. Families in our community are being ripped apart based on racist beliefs and complete lies. People are dying, and they are dying in our community. I want to thank the council members who came to support the vigil, an act of love shown by the community, who all saw the inhumanity that our neighbors are facing. I do want to express my extreme disappointment that Mayor Chevlin, you were not there, you did not participate. I felt that your response lacked empathy and a path forward. I know that other members of the community have spoken to you guys about this before, and I again ask you, the representatives of Monrovia, to join the city of LA's litigation against the aggressive and dangerous tactics deployed by ICE against the residents of California. Adding our city to all future cases against ICE's overreach reinforces our commitment to preserving the dignity, well-being, and safety of all residents. No city should stand by while the residents must shoulder the burden of resisting the ICE raids.
Thank you. Those are the only speaker cards that we have this evening. Is there anyone else wanting to come and address the city council under public comment on any item not on our agenda? Okay. Yes, sir. Could you give us your name?
Yes. My name is Larry Rahab, R-A-H-E-B. And I would seriously ask the council to think about whether or not Monrovia can become a sanctuary city.
Again, any other speakers under our public comment this evening on any items not on our agenda? Okay, not seeing any, then we will close that portion of our meeting, and we will move on then to reports. And thank you for everyone participating this evening. We will move on to our report of the city manager and staff, and we'll start off with our CM1, our city council directives update. And I know that I had asked, under our directives, our council had asked for information regarding the status and many of the items that have come forward tonight about what can we do? What are we doing in terms of who enforces a temporary restraining order? The status of the lawsuit, and also the sanctuary city item. Obviously, the state of California has declared itself as a sanctuary city. So with that, I know you have other items under your directives, but I wanted to be sure to have those included.
Are you, excuse me, are you asking us to report on anything related to the incident right now, or just follow the future?
Right, and the status of the lawsuit about whether or not we would be allowed to join such a lawsuit, the sanctuary city comment, the enforcement of the temporary restraining order, and, yes. And the investigation.
Pardon me. Specifically with regard to the lawsuit that's been referenced and in which a temporary restraining order has been issued. The lawsuit is in federal court, and federal courts have very specific rules regarding parties to lawsuits and parties adding themselves to existing lawsuits. In this case, there was a lawsuit filed by some immigration advocacy groups, and in response to that lawsuit, City of Los Angeles and some other agencies filed what's called a complaint and intervention. In federal court, you have to ask a court for permission to participate in a lawsuit like that. And so in that case, the City of Los Angeles and some other groups requested intervention. They're not entitled to intervene by right. And the first group, the court granted that request to intervene, granted it because, well, among other reasons, the timing was such that the TRO had not been issued, the parties hadn't been, you know, fully responded to the lawsuit, and so that intervention request was granted. There was then a second group of cities that were organized by the City of Los Angeles to also try to join that lawsuit. They filed a second complaint and intervention. That complaint and intervention came after the TRO was issued, and that request to get into the lawsuit is still pending, and the court hasn't acted on that. In response to the city council's request for information, I did have an exchange with the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office to find out about any potential additional intervention in that lawsuit. The Los Angeles City Attorney's Office told me that there are no current plans to have additional groups of public agencies file a request for intervention. They feel like they've got the lawsuit teed up at the moment, and as I said, a TRO has been issued. So I am in contact with the City Attorney's Office, but asked to be contacted if there were further activities in terms of adding cities to that lawsuit. And so the representative of the City Attorney's Office told me that she would contact me if that happened. So we'll stay on top of that. As you know, when a case goes, finishes at the trial court level and goes up on appeal, there's also a process that cities engage in pretty frequently called the friend of the court process. That's usually organized through the League of California Cities. I happen to sit this year, the last two years, on the Legal Advocacy Committee for the League of California Cities. I'm the LA County Representative. So if that effort occurs, I will know about it and bring it back to the city council. But that will occur after a trial has been completed.
Could you expand, though, on the enforcement of the TRO?
Sure. A federal judge's order, like a TRO, is enforced by the judge. It's not like a new statute that has been adopted or something like that where lots of people have, lots of agencies have enforcement rights. There's a process in the federal court for petitioning the court to find that the federal government has violated the TRO. It most likely will come up at the trial stage of this case, that's where that evidence will be submitted. But violating a federal court order is essentially contempt of court, and the federal court has to enforce its own order.
And the sanctuary city issue in terms of, again, it's clear the state of California has declared itself as a sanctuary city, and it's my understanding that regardless, and I know that there are some cities and counties who on top of that have declared that, but that does not bar any type of enforcement from the federal government or ICE from coming to our city.
That's correct. It doesn't bar the federal government, it doesn't bar the federal government. As the council is aware, and we've reported previously, the state of California has adopted a number of statutes that prohibit law enforcement from cooperating in enforcement activities. There's some other statutes that apply to what school districts can and can't do, for example. So there's an extensive set of laws that prohibits the cooperation of law enforcement, our law enforcement agency, in any kind of enforcement action by ICE or Border Patrol or any of those other federal agencies. And we, of course, follow those statutes, and those rules are in the Monrovia PD's policy manual, which is, as we have said before, is available online. Anybody can read what those policies say. So we are following and have adopted as policy all of those state statutes related to kind of the sanctuary state concept, if you will. Sanctuary city designation is essentially a political statement, and it's not something, especially in a general law city like Monrovia, that has a force of law that goes beyond what's already in the general state law that we're already complying with.
Okay. Mr. Steele, did you want to?
Additionally, a few of the items I would add. On the date of the 14th, because Mr. Montoya's death occurred on the 210 freeway, the California Highway Patrol is conducting the investigation into the cause of death. We've had officers involved in the interviews. We actually had one officer who was a witness there during the raid that happened at Home Depot. So we've participated in that. We've submitted emails and communications to our state assembly members, ensuring that a complete and full investigation happens. That will be a state agency performing that investigation. I should note, to date, we have received exactly zero communication from the federal government on anything that happened. We don't expect that to change. As our Police Chiefs Association meets, all chiefs continue to be very perplexed and very frustrated by the lack of communication that is happening. There will continue to be as much information gathering as we can during this very, this time of uncertainty. In a few weeks, Jeanne Grant and another person from the Immigration Resource Center will actually be presenting to the San Gabriel Valley City Managers Association. Last week, I received information from a statewide roundtable, city managers across the state that are addressing this outside of Southern California, where it's a problem everywhere. And so I think there's as much information gathering as we can right now at this time of just unprecedented nature. You know, most of us haven't seen what we're seeing right now. So I think we continue to be very frustrated by unknown, uncertain approach, certainly lack of compassion I think the city can agree with. One maybe comment I would just say on our behalf is, you know, just because city council or city staff may not be present at a vigil or at an event or activity, you know, I hope people don't mistake that as lack of empathy or support for what's happening. Our officers, our paramedics, who are the ones who transported Mr. Montoya and did everything they could to help him survive the tragic accident, are very upset with what happened, what they saw. They all swear oaths to protect life, whatever that means. And I just want to reiterate, you know, per previous statements issued by the city, we do comply with state law. We do have an immigration enforcement policy that's been on the books for a number of years, which is that we don't cooperate. We don't, we cooperate to the extent that state law is compliant. We don't do immigration. We don't do enforcement. I think it's hard for us to hear that lack of presence in an event means that somehow we're complicit or we're supportive of what's going on. And I just don't think that could be further from the truth. Perhaps one additional comment I would share is related to FLOC cameras and surveillance.
That was said. Thank you.
For several years, the city of Monrovia has employed FLOC cameras, as well as a company called LVT, which provides some high-tech surveillance equipment. FLOC is most widely known for their automated license plate readers. It only reads the license plates, and we're able to basically use that to flag vehicles that are entered into a law enforcement system for some type of known crime or reference. So in a great example, and I'm not going to go into too many details, little over a year and a half ago, there was a shooting here in Monrovia, and we were conducting a homicide investigation. And one of the first pieces of information we received in the hour following the shooting came from a FLOC camera. And that's how we were able to flag a vehicle. We're able to look for missing persons. We're able to look for vehicles that are known maybe to have, you know, wanted in a child gone missing. So the FLOC camera system is very specific, only accessible for certain uses by law enforcement. And we have these positions throughout the city. The locations that were shared earlier, and I mentioned this to Ms. Lochner, those are not city FLOC cameras. So whether they are, FLOC is a private company, whether they're engaged by a Home Depot, a private property owner, through LA County, several of the locations added were in LA County Public Rights of Way, or Metro Right of Way, or City of Duarte Right of Way, we're not aware of. The city does not have any new or added surveillance since the October 14th incident. We continue to use ours for the purposes we've used in the last several years. The LVT cameras, which is the one you'll see down at Station Square Park, is the one with the flickering blue light. And that's been a very critical tool for us to address increasing complaints and calls about crime, both in Station Square Park, also at Library Park, and recently, many residents saw it at the Vons Shopping Center, where it was used to help us address some challenges we had with youth on Friday nights during the summertime. If anyone has any questions about what we do or how we do it, we want to be very clear with our residents that they're being used for very specific law enforcement purposes, but they're welcome to reach out at any point.
On the FLOC cameras, I just wanted to clarify then, those are for the IDing of registered vehicles or through those, the license plates than those license numbers that...
They can only read license plates as well as the vehicles they're attached to. They don't do facial recognition, they can't identify persons, but they can identify the license plate and the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add on that point, again, state law has very specific requirements and limitations on the use of the ALPR Automated License Plate Recognition System, that that's what a FLOC camera is. Among those restrictions are that the local agency must, after a public hearing, adopt a usage and data policy. We did hold a public hearing when the city first went down the road of putting up FLOC cameras, complied with what state law requires, and I just double-checked on the police department's website, the ALPR policy is right there on the policy page of the Monrovia PD's website for anybody who wants to take a look at that, and has been since it was adopted several years ago.
Well, thank you very much. This obviously is a very emotional topic, and I didn't, I wanted the information to come forward so that we can be as transparent as we possibly can, especially in answering that question of what can we do and what have we done. And obviously, you mentioned the Immigration Resource Center, and they are locally here in Monrovia, and they are a great resource for information for all of our residents and beyond, at any rate. And we've had your assurances as well, that we are going to continue, as you did, Mr. Steele, talk about getting the additional information as things progress and as to investigations as well. But again, very frustrating for all of us, and again, it's a sad commentary, that we can't do a better job at this. This is really a sad situation, tragic situation. Anyway, on that, was there anything else that you wanted to bring forward as to our directives?
I do have some new directives that I'd like to add, and it's kind of hard to follow that discussion, so I'm just going to jump right into it. So I apologize, just jumping right in. We received a request from the mayor of Azusa to be reappointed to the Water Quality Authority. Mayor Gonzalez has represented the San Monrovia, as well as members of the San Gabriel Valley for many, many years. He's requested our recommendation for reappointment. We bring that to city council at your October 7th meeting. Also, some items that I'd like to share this evening. I don't know if Captain Sarah Kovarubias is in the back door. She would not be very friendly with me tomorrow if I mentioned it was her birthday and that we should sing to her. But many of you know Captain Kovarubias. She was in the dunk tank at our national night out. You'll see her at community events and programs. She's a wonderful leader in our police department. And when you see her on your way out, just make sure to mention happy birthday to Sarah.
I don't see any movement back there.
Well, she's hiding. I know she is hiding, but she's back there.
She might be celebrating early.
He's pointing she is there.
Also, if I could mention Angela Cho, Angela's face is going to peek out from behind the door in just a moment. Angela has been with the city of Monrovia for nearly eight years, and she recently received an opportunity to become an executive in a neighboring city, the faraway city of La Canata Flint Ridge. We're very happy for her, but we're also very sad to see her go. Oftentimes, when the community experiences events, activities, when they see the weekly city manager's update, when employees are working on their computers and have a functional working computer and cellphone and mobile data terminal in their police vehicles, whatever special project it is, Angela is involved with it.
whatever special project it is, Angela is involved with it. And she's just been a wonderful help and support for the organization. And so wish her well. Her last day will be at the end of this week.
Oh.
We received great news. We'll be, the Office of Traffic Safety is awarding the city of Monrovia a $50,000 grant. This is related to our Walk Bike Roll Event, typically held in the month of May. It's been a great partnership with community member Rob Lewis, several schools. But this is the first year we've received a good chunk of funding to help us better promote the event and encourage kids, parents, and anyone to come walk, bike, or roll to schools. We're, we're looking to expand it. Typically, it's been to a couple of schools. We're hoping it grows bigger, and that event will be in May this year. But we hope that everyone will consider spending time with the community. It's a great way to bring people together, a great way to support the kids as they go to school for the day. My daughter's already asking, when do I get to ride my bike to school? I tell her next, next year. And last but not least, I, I... I'm going to pull this document out. So Alex DeChiki, Alex, if you just raise your hand, I won't make you come up to the front. Also, Sophia Suzza, who's not here, she's pursuing a graduate degree, and she had class tonight she couldn't get out of. As well as members of several neighboring cities, the Joint Powers Authority for our Rio Hondo Watershed Management Authority, and even council members today, but even past council members like Gloria Crudgington, who are so passionate about our clean water and more particularly, safe clean water. I want to give a little backstory. For nearly 10 years, as the city has been trying to comply with the Safe Clean Water Act of Los Angeles County, which is among the most stringent, rigorous stormwater pollution prevention programs in the nation, it's been very difficult to find ways to collaborate and work together to solve a problem. Many cities stuck their heads in the sand. Many cities actually sued and tried to fight it. Monrovia's approach was, let's sit down, let's roll up our sleeves, let's figure out how we get it done and how we afford to get it done. As Gloria liked to say, it was a $200 million problem, and we couldn't afford it. So if we want safe, clean water, how do we afford it? So this, the process was the city of Monrovia, as well as several other cities, created a plan that instead of everybody doing their own thing, these six members would do five large projects together. We'd pool our funding together, and we would create a pathway where we could have safe, clean water on a small, mini-regional level, but it's a way we could all get it done. It received approvals from all the different state regulatory agencies. And, and while it's been a very long and slow process designing these legacy projects, it's been very rewarding that our projects have kind of moved forward to the front. The city of Monrovia's specific project is Peck Lake. We refer to this as the Rio Hondo Ecosystem Restoration Project, which is not really about expanding water storage capacity. It's really about cleaning and filtering the water as it enters the lake and then makes its way down the waterway. So our project is about that safe, clean water component, not so much a storage component. And it's, we've had countless hurdles over the years. It's about a $30 million project that with the creation of a Joint Powers Authority, we even now have a separate legal entity representing the, the six members that now overseeing these projects. So the city of Monrovia as an entity won't even see the project, the dollars spent, the time spent in our audits and our budgets. It's now being handled separately. Our project has been very difficult, very challenging, and it promises to deliver expanded recreational amenities, enhance public benefit for local communities and families. In addition to safe, clean water, it even expands the recreational amenities at Peck Lake that the county is very excited to have. It's their, it's our park. And we're just really excited to remove trash, pollutants, and everything from Rio Hondo. Well, the way we designed the project, if you could imagine a big filter, our staff and the team had this idea of, well, maybe we could design the filter larger to clean more water than we really need. And so we designed this project with the idea that any capacity we would have beyond the city of Monrovia, maybe someone else could partner with us and join in the effort. We received a letter last week from Caltrans. This specifically comes from the Watershed Manager for Caltrans. Caltrans is pleased to support the Rio Hondo, the, I'm sorry, the Rio Hondo San Gabriel River Management Authority as a funding partner to this, to this agency collaboration to improve water quality in the Sopit Wash, the Rio Hondo Channel. Caltrans intends to allocate $8.5 million to support the construction of this project and in turn, received project pollutant load reduction credit towards Caltrans permit compliance. This is more than 25% of the total project cost that will be paid for by Caltrans. To Alex, to Sophia, and to the many team members who've been working, work, you know, tirelessly for many, many years, I think this is one of the most significant funding contributions for a large construction project I've seen in a long time. And I just wanted to thank Alex publicly, thank the council for your vision. This is the right project, and Gloria would be smiling right now.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's, that's my report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions of Dylan this evening? Thank you very, very, very much. Okay. Then we are going to now move on to our reports of city council, and I am going to start with Mr. Beldon. Oh, I'm sorry. I just moved right along. Sorry about that. RCM 2, Letter of Opposition for SB 79. That is a Weiner bill, housing development, transit-oriented development. And Mr. Speek?
I apologize. When I said that's the end of my report, I probably should have said I have one more required.
Yeah, yeah. That's okay.
The, the item before you, and I believe a, a letter was prepared. I don't see it in my agenda packet here. Council should have it on yours. It is part of the agenda. We received a request from the League of California Cities to oppose Senate Bill 79 by Senate Member Anthony Weiner. The, the proposal essentially does a couple of things. One is it gives broad discretion and direction to Caltrans to build housing on Caltrans-owned properties. It gives Caltrans and a governing board at Caltrans the ability and discretion to determine housing projects. And it's a pretty broad green light to build housing on state projects, which, which does not necessarily, or inherently, require any type of local input or control. But the other thing it does, which is of more concern to the city of Monrovia, is it makes it by right, meaning administrative approval, no planning commission, no DRC, by right approvals of up to seven-story housing developments within a half-mile radius of all metro stops. This one requirement alone, when you look at our, the location of our metro stop, as well as the metro stop in Arcadia, the metro stop in Arcadia reaches all the way over to Fifth Avenue, but the metro stop in Monrovia reaches up past Foothill Boulevard, excuse me, up past Huntington Drive. It's a very significant reach that is a half-mile, within that half-mile radius. The concern of the city of, of Monrovia and our planning staff is this does not consider our general plan. It would increase density. It would also take non-residential properties and make them probably more interesting for potential residential development. But where so many of our neighborhoods, we, we already see the impact of five, six, and seven-story developments immediately adjacent to the metro stop. By expanding that reach to within a half-mile radius, it would take, it would allow for up to seven stories without city approvals to go far beyond where it's currently located and what's currently allowed in our general plan. So we had drafted a letter in opposition of SB 79, and we have not sent that yet to our Calcity's representative or submitted through the online portal. If council does not have concern, we'll submit a letter, which is based on a template provided by the League of Cities, with specific impacts in the city of Monrovia in addition to. So we'll make sure that that's available. I just don't have it in front of me. If council's okay with that, I'll submit that letter tomorrow.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. Now you're done, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then moving on to our, RCM 3, Update on Recreation Software Registration System. And we have Heather Sayers, who is going to give us that report. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shovlin and council members. It is a pleasure to be here tonight, share with you our recreation registration software. We are really excited to have this new registration software because we've had some challenges with our current registration software. Some of those current challenges have been that it is not user-friendly. The software is not cloud-based, so it's made it difficult to support the community in the way we strive to support the community's needs. It also, with our current software Rec Pro, it's obsolete and will no longer be supported starting at the end of the month. So it's definitely time for a change. When it comes to finding the right fit for Monrovia, Administrative Services, City Managers' Office IT, and Community Services reviewed various options, learned from other agencies, and approved a contract with Civic Plus. So I'm excited to share with you some highlights and enhancements we have with this new software. Some of the highlights with Civic Plus is that it's a cloud-based system, which allows for access to the software from anywhere with internet. It's a mobile-friendly experience, allowing participants to register for programs on their tablets, iPads, and phones. It has an ease-of-use interface for the community and the staff. It's improved the layout of our program areas to make registration quicker and easier. We have a new calendar feature that lets you quickly see all of our events and programs in one place and check when our facilities are available. We also are able to add reminders to personal calendars for activities and special events, so no one's able to miss a Monrovia memory. We have a survey feature to capture feedback within the system. And going back to the calendar, we're able to view those facilities that are available for rent by checking the availability and pricing for facility rentals. It also contains a ticketing feature for events such as Wine Rock and Monrovia Days, and we found the reporting to be very customizable for our needs. The entire recreation team has been working on the backend over this past month to ensure the launch of the software will be the best for the community. With any new transition, we know there may be a learning curve, so we want to ensure we are approaching this change with our community in mind. We have this flyer pictured here that it was in the Monrovia Today announcing the new system. We've also placed this flyer on the city website under our Activity Guide page, where residents would typically register. In the next two weeks, we'll be adding a note to the city manager update, and we'll also be creating a step-by-step guide to ensure the community is supported. Our team is so excited, and we're here to serve. So if anyone needs any help registering, they can call us at the community center or come in, we're happy to take the time to assist them. We are getting close to our launch time, so the team is having a final training meeting tomorrow with Civic Plus on September 3rd, in anticipation for that Go Live date with registration on September 15th. And our classes are set to begin on September 29th with Rec Pro, the support sunsetting on September 30th. We're so excited and thrilled for this new software and the enhancements that it's going to bring for the community. So thank you so much, and, and that concludes my update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Heather. Any questions of Heather? I, I wanted to ask, are the new activity guides, have they been, are they in homes yet?
The, the activity guides are, are online now. So we have activity guides at different city facilities for personal pickup if people want them. But the, the new activity guides are moving over to an online virtual program.
So they won't be mailed out any longer?
Correct. The Monrovia Today is an, is an online version. It'll be, it'll be tied to things like this where you can, you can...
Oh, I, I, but we won't be mailed out a hard copy any longer?
Correct.
Okay. I'm a little bit behind the times here. Well, that, that's wonderful, since I live on my phone anyways, and it's so much, you know, so many things just don't work as well on your phone. And that'll be absolutely wonderful to be able to, to get more information and be able to do the registration and whatnot on my phone. I, I do that, like I said, I live on my phone, but I was still looking for the hard copy of the activity guide. I like to look at the pictures. But thank you very much.
I think this is great, moving in the right direction, particularly with efficiency and bringing everything in one house. I think it's amazing. But I also wanted to ask for those, for the, our elderly population who are not online and they still want to register, how do we make it equitable for everyone? And does it have different languages, such as Spanish and, you know, different languages that someone can go and use it?
For our seniors, they can come up, or, or anyone that would need assistance that maybe doesn't have an email, or it's not particularly friendly with internet or website, they can come into the community center. The interface is ease-of-use, so the staff are seeing what you would see on the website at home. But they can come into the community center. We can help them set up an account, and they'll get all their notifications to them. And we can just make sure that they're set up this way. For other languages, the public website that we are building, that's in the design phase, does have different, you can change the translation of it.
That's good. And last thing is for passports. Can you register for your passports on there?
We're not online yet.
Oh, okay.
For the calendar to register, we'll still ask to call into the community center. But we are noting that, and we're getting there.
And I, and I know the senior groups, they get, have the hard copy of the activity guides when they come to the meetings. So they are available, and we'll, we have them available here. I know at City Hall and the library is...
Yes, we have them available at public facilities. So they'll, we'll even have them here. A lot, a lot of times, most people get them and throw them away. But a lot of people do like to have, like to keep them. So we still are printing out probably close to 1,000 that will make available at public facilities if people do want a hard copy. Each time we mail out the quarterly update, it's almost $25,000 per mailing. And, you know, with how much, in addition to waste, trying to reduce the amount of waste we have, even just saving dollars by doing it virtual in concurrence with the, the improved Rec software, I do, we just, it's, it's, it's been a great transition for us. We're excited. I think the ease-of-use is going to be much, much better for folks. And to, and to Mayor Pro Tem Dr. Kelly's point, the process for registration is really only changing because the software's a little bit different and better. But people can still come and register. They can still participate in all the programs. We just think this tool is going to be an all-around better tool for those who are wanting to register on their own with their mobile devices on.
All the regular counter, counter service and over the phone, it's all still there. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, then this is the first addition that will be totally all online. I believe there was a, at least I had a hard copy for the, for the, or the summer one.
Yep, correct. And, and we did, we did do virtual back during COVID, and we had a very positive response. We went back to printing them out. We're going to try it again. So it's just something that we've been kind of evolving. The other thing is, I might just mention for council, the, council at a previous meeting, you approved a change to the contract with the company we use to help design the Monrovia Today. The look of the Monrovia Today in the past, we think is a great look, it's a great product. But in just trying to evolve and make it better, we wanted to look a little bit more modern design, much like the presentation slides you've seen tonight, with, have just been, just a significant improved design and look. We want to make sure that the, the online ver, the mobile ver, or the, the e-version, as well as the hard copies we do print, all have a, a new and contemporary look.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Great, great review.
Just a couple of comments. Just wanted to say thanks. I think this is an outstanding advance. I know that a lot of folks have had some concerns as well in the past with some of the clunkiness. So thank you for making this change. Getting to the point that I don't know if everyone really realizes we're not going to get Monrovia Today soon. I think it'd be really great if we at least send out like one flyer, if we can do a one-mailer to all those people that we normally get to just say, here, and here's the, here's how you can register for your classes, because everyone's going to be like, oh, Monrovia's not putting on classes this fall. Or a lot of people might be thinking that. So I think it'd be really helpful.
Yeah, and a special highlight in his update, and we can all share it. Get the news, news out.
And hopefully, we can put flyers all over normal places, too, that just, people can register for classes so easily now. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you, Heather. Okay, now we can go to reports of city council members. Then I will, again, I'll start with Mr. Beldon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it's, it's good to be back. I hope most folks had a good summer. It's been a challenging summer, challenging end of the summer in August. I think there's been quite a bit going on. Before I get to some of those other thoughts, just wanted to share the, some, some good news. There is, it was in the city manager's update, but the Clean Power Alliance is once again offering their community grants program, its community benefits grant program, it's open to organizations for projects focused on advanced clean energy, sustainability, resiliency. Multiple organizations, nonprofits in the area can apply. I think we've had actually pretty good success here in Monrovia and some other groups applying, so those are open from September 2nd through the 30th of this year, and it's about 15,000 to 30,000 that give out to those individual organizations that are awarded. So please keep that on the horizon for folks. And then, I mean, I just, I think many of us all have that same feeling of grief, just overwhelmed with the tragedy that happened here in Monrovia and the compassion we all feel for those, our fellow human beings, and that everyone should be seen as a human. And I thank the people that came out and just asked for us to partner. I think that's what we're all trying to do here with everyone in our community on a regular basis, and I think you heard that tonight from a lot of us. I know I reached out to our Senator and our Assembly Member to ask them to investigate, a thorough investigation on the state side that, as you've already heard, the city is also asked about as well. I would actually ask that we do put together a letter that we send out to our Attorney General Bonta, Governor Newsom, and both Senator Perez and some of the mayor here being, asking them to really let us know what they're doing on that investigation and to give us feedback and to make sure that they're doing the job, because it did occur, the murder occurred on the freeway, which is a CHP piece of land, but it occurred here in Monrovia in our city as well, and we, that's the least we could do, for sure. And getting to the point that Craig brought up, our city attorney, about joining the lawsuit, there definitely been times when I've thought, it's, it's obviously in action, it's moving forward. It's not a time where there's a huge need for us to get involved, but I feel like it's at a point where it's, when an incident occurs in your city where the federal government is obviously not following their own law, not following the federal injunction, and blatantly participating in the death of someone unfortunately, I don't see how we can really resist the request to make to say we should join this case since a death occurred in our own city. And I feel like that's a piece of evidence that any court would see as a real need for a city to be part of that case. So I would think it makes sense to do that at some point. And if that has to come back to later points to discuss, I think it makes sense.
And I think Mr. Steele advises that he would keep us up to date on the progress of that and if they were accepting any other members to that lawsuit.
Yeah, I would just say we send a letter and say we want, that's it. One person, that's all. Thanks.
Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the honor of attending the vigil for Roberto Carlos. I've often seen Monrovia as a bubble, a bubble that on the surface you see the prosperity in the city, drive-through or Old Town, the diversity of Monrovia's people, the public safety that we feel, but that bubble was burst with the death of Roberto Carlos. The times have found us. What we see happening on a national basis finally caught up to our gem city of Monrovia. And I want to thank the city attorney for his research into the legal intricacies of the lawsuits, when, or how, or if a city can join. But I think one of the things that we've lost sight of is, this is more than just the law, the intricacies of the law and lawsuits. We're losing sight of the humanity of this. We're losing sight that this is about people essentially. And it's people here that, if not living in Monrovia, work in Monrovia and somehow contribute to our community. At the vigil, my favorite part of it, yes, we had a procession, there was speeches, there was prayers, but the most meaningful thing, at least in my tradition as a Roman Catholic, a vigil is silence and respect. There was two areas where candles were set up. One was fronting the freeway on the off-ramp, close to where Roberto Carlos was killed. It was quiet there. And through that silence, it was more a vigil, which is what it should be, about listening and meditating rather than making noise. That was the most significant thing. But I think that now we've come to a point where it's not just about being quiet and listening, asking for God's interference, it's come to a point where things need to happen, we need to make them happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Spicer.
Yes, Mayor, I'm Mayor Chevlin, and I'll start off with the update regarding the Fountain to the Falls Run-Walk. It's this Saturday, September the 6th, the race will step off at 7:00 AM. There's still time for some of you who would like to run. I will not be running. I retired from that because of my knees. Those not looking to run the race are welcome to join us at Lybery Park to cheer on the runners both as they start and as they finish the race. And at the end, they'll have an award ceremony, which will begin at 9:00 AM at Lybery Fountain. Also, back in July, I attended, I attended a League of California Cities event, and that event pretty much focused on emergency preparedness. It had to do with collaboration, community engagement, the technology and data, data side of it. And the data side is where they were leveraging the GIS mapping and early warning systems, equity and recovery. What about the vulnerable population, especially the seniors and low-income? Here in Monrovia, we do a pretty good job, you know, in taking care of our seniors. We got a heck of a cert team. Suzie Dobson does a good job in collaboration with the fire department. Also, we had a session on the youth. Now, this, it seems like the League of California Cities has been gearing a lot of their sessions towards the youth. How does the government engage the youth? But it also comes with not just the government side of the house, but it's the government side working with the local schools. But that's pretty much it, and a lot of the different things that the cities are doing, the cities within California are doing, is pretty much what we're already doing with our YES intern, internship. And I think they're doing the same thing, except they're copying Monrovia because we've already set the example. But there's always room for improvement, and I have some things that I like, I will be sharing with Sherry in order for us to enhance the Youth Leadership Academy. I think it'd be very beneficial. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Did you want to say, I'm pretty sure that was after, and I know it was after our first meeting in August about the AJCC? Did I do the acr, did I get it right?
Yeah, you got it right. AJCC, American Job Center.
Yeah.
Back on August the 13th, we had a grand opening of our first American Job Center here in Monrovia at the Adult School. There, veterans will be able to go in for training, they'll be able to go in and look for jobs, the youth. The county has money available for our youth to be able to work, and the county will pay, or if there's a business in town that are lacking funding to be able to train a kid, the county would take care of that for 120 hours. And if that young, if that student is doing really good in that job field and you want to continue with them, you can get an additional, I believe, 180 hours is on-the-job training. And they would still be paid for by that, by LA County. But there's a lot more involved. I'm pretty sure the Adult School will be building a website for the Job Center, so any more information, you can either take 20 minutes out of your day and go over to the Adult School and just tour it and see what kind of services they have there.
Great, it's a great program.
It's an excellent program.
Great, great program. Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Then, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have an exciting report, but prior to my exciting report, I definitely wanted to just give my sentiments along with my fellow council members concerning the concerned residents that came before us tonight. I want to make sure that we as Monrovians are just taking care of our neighbors, because there are a lot of people that are out of work right now. They're afraid to go to work, so that means that we need to be more conscious of maybe our kids, dropping our kids off, paying attention a little bit more to our neighbors and seeing how we could give helping hands, whether it be offering food, whether it be offering rides to kids to get to school, whatever the needs are. I just think that this will be a good time as we're trying to figure everything out and how we can best serve our community. I think one is being mindful and paying attention to where the local needs are, because again, people are out of work, and we need to be aware of that and see how we could serve. Now I'd like to shift my attention to something super exciting. Carrie, as you make your way down for your wonderful report, it had been, long before I got here, on the heart of council to ensure that the library be the center of our city and it be the hub of our community where people could gather, families can gather and learn, and I'm so privileged to be on the library board and sitting there and hearing monthly all of the programming that's going on to serve our community. It's hard to keep up, it's hard to even report it on it, because there's some amazing things. I posted about a sewing class for teens. I mean, it's so much going on. So Carrie's here, and she's going to give us some, an amazing report on what is happening through the library and how we are taking care of our community.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kelly. And thank you to Mayor Chevlin and the entire council. I'm going to be talking about a lot of our successes this year that we had at the library, but none of them would happen without your support. So thank you first and foremost. This happened because of your hard work and your support, so thank you. So just some quick highlights for fiscal year '24-'25. We actually saw a 29% increase in program attendance and a 45% increase in our summer reading program, which was just amazing. We also provided a lot of new programming and services to our local senior facilities, which I'll get into in a minute. We expanded our veterans' programming and built new partnerships with local businesses. We also launched our new Library of Things.
Which is awesome.
I know, right? As you can see right here in this photo. And also expanded the library's makerspace and technology tools. So as I mentioned, our programming served nearly 26,000 people, a 29% increase over the previous year. Every year it seems to be growing and growing, and we just have amazing programs and staff who put so much into them and create really creative programs for all ages. So we have monthly Dungeons and Dragons that grew from three or four people to now it's so large we had to push them into a bigger room, and there's like 20-plus people that show up. And they've built this community, which is the whole reason why we do these programs, is for the community to come together and share with one another and build relationships. We're out in the community with Storytime with Park Naturalists and our partnership with the Recreation Department. We have family events as well, where the entire family can come together and bond over activity. I am so proud of what this has, what this represents, is because every age of who you are in Monrovia, every age can come to the library and find something to do. So I'm really proud of that. We also, these are just some more pictures from some of our programs, including our summer reading kickoff, which saw 1,300 people in Library Park for the kickoff. We've had gardening classes, game nights, craft programs, Station Square Storytimes. We also do a lot of outreach, so we served nearly 16,000 people at outreach events last year. That's between the Monrovia Reads van, at the local schools, at MAP, their annual conference, their block parties, the Veterans Day, the annual event. We have all sorts of amazing programs and events within this community where we're able to go out and share about library services. And I think that's a big part of why we also saw an increase in our programming, is that we're getting out there in the community to let them know, "Hey, look at all the awesome things you can do at the library." Particularly, I really want to highlight senior outreach. We are building our relationships with Brookdale and Heritage Park. We take programming there on a regular basis. We do one-on-one tech help with the seniors at the facilities. We also go regularly to the senior clubs at the community center, and they always love to learn about 3D printing at the library and our game collection. So it's just a wonderful opportunity to make sure that everyone from zero to 100 knows they have something they can do at the library. And then, I wanted to highlight our veterans' program, which is just near and dear to my heart. I know all of you care very much about it, you're all very active at our events. Our interaction, number of interactions with veterans and their family members grew by 60% year-over-year. This is absolutely amazing. Our onsite veterans staff with our partnership with LA County means we have an onsite person from Tuesday through Friday to help veterans and their family members sign up for benefits, find services that they need. It's hugely, it's life-changing for so many families. So I am so proud of this number, and I know it's going to continue to grow every year. We also have expanded our programming and built new partnerships, so we've partnered with Starbucks on our monthly meetup. We've partnered with Makers &amp; Clay on pottery workshops. We've partnered with Look Cinemas doing veterans' matinees. So we're just so proud of all of these partnerships that have helped us expand even further what we're able to offer our veterans. So we have our annual events like the picnic and the thank-you dinner. We have our specialty programs like Paint and Sip, which is always fun. And we also make sure to get out there and promote Veterans Resource Center at local veterans' events and programs. We regularly go to the VFW, we go to a lot of local veteran outreach events and things like that to make sure that all the veterans in our community know what we're able to offer them, because this is a really unique service that not a lot of libraries are able to do. So I'm very proud of this, and I'm really proud of all of your support for this program in particular. And then finally, I just wanted to touch on some of our tech-driven services. So as I mentioned, we greatly expanded our Library of Things. We have sewing machines, tools, gardening kits, instruments, telescopes. They're incredibly popular. They've checked out over 5,000 times just in one year, all of the elements in our Library of Things. That will continue to grow every year, I'm sure of it, because they're always being checked out. We also have a mobile kitchen, the Charlie Cart, which some of you have seen and have even tasted some of the delicious cookies.
Eaten cookies.
Thank you. But we do roll that out, these are some teens at a teen event, making cookies, they absolutely love it. So we just find these elements that are like able to expand what we're able to offer even more. So cooking classes and gardening classes and music classes, it's amazing what we're able to do now. We have 3D printing classes for teens and tweens who are so excited to learn how to 3D print. So it's just kind of amazing additional resource that we're able to offer the community. And these are just some of the pictures from those classes. We've gotten overwhelming positive feedback from the community on this. People are absolutely amazed at what they can do and check out at the library now. Every time I sign up someone for a library, I'm like, "Did you know you can check out an instrument or a sewing machine?"
We're not just about books anymore.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to share that. We also have a VR headset. If anyone wants to come to game night, you can try a virtual reality game, it'll be a lot of fun. So those are some of the programs and outreach over the last fiscal year that I wanted to share with you guys. And then we also have Next Steps, which is kind of what's coming up as we're focusing on our library enhancement project, which the plans are complete and are ready to bid. Unfortunately, costs have... Unfortunately, costs have greatly grown as everything, everything's a lot more expensive these days. So we kind of see that as an opportunity for us to take a pause and step back and really look at the project and see what it is that we really want for this project in general, what will actually help the library and the community the best, and what's the smartest way forward to make sure it has long-term success. So there's no challenge in Monrovia, just opportunities to learn and grow, right? So that's how we see this right now. Staff and I have met with Dylan and Tina and we've talked about different ways that we can move forward with our funding resources that we have. What are ways that we can just reallocate space right now to make more room for all these very popular programs? But we're working on kind of a list and recommended actions that we would bring back to you to get further guidance from you guys. So I just wanted to kind of provide you a little bit of an update on that as well. And then finally, I just wanted to finish with this, a love bomb from all of our community members who just say very nice things about the library and how much they love it. So we always appreciate that as well. So I just want to thank you all one more time for all of your support for the library and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
You're doing an awesome job.
Thank you.
And it's always fun when you're at a library event, the number of people that are actually outside of the area and just sing the praises of the Monrovia Library and what great programming they have. And especially, and then when we do things like petting zoos and things like that for the truck petting zoos and things like that and the kids or this, we do things with the schools and it's just really neat. Or partnering with Monrovia Reads and all the things we do in that regard. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Carrie, the things that you do for the veterans is really awesome. You know, that's, that's the talk of the town. Is what you do for the veterans. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much for making the library the center of our city. Thank you.
Yay. Yeah, for all of those that didn't think, you know, okay, you build a bigger and better library, you know, oh, books are passe or whatever, but it's not just about books. It's a meeting place, it's the Library of Things, it's checking out that guitar or the set of tools to fix something or the sewing machine to learn how to, so it's just so much more. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I just add one last thing, not to you, Carrie? Thank you, Carrie, you did an amazing job. But the IRC is having an event November the 1st, a fundraiser. I just wanted to put that out there to those that could come to help raise funds for the Immigration Resource Center, November 1st.
Is that at the museum?
Yes, is at the museum and you can go on the IRC website coming soon to get more information.
Can you repeat the date again?
It's November the 1st, Saturday. And we're looking for, yes, it's on all of our calendars. I think we're all going to be there.
I think Dylan also put it, have you, I thought I saw it too in the update, in your update, something about it, but.
Yeah, maybe we could put that on there. We'll get a flyer to you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, we may have been down for our second meeting in August, but I can't say that August, at least for me, was a very restful one. I think my husband can attest to that. Very draining. And in addition to all the things that went down on August 14th, things continue to rage on in terms of dealing with homelessness and housing affordability issues. I think I mentioned I am the Chair of the ECR, the Executive Committee on Housing, homelessness, excuse me, homelessness, regional alignment. I probably missed that acronym. But at any rate, and fighting for our local dollars through Measure A dollars and how those dollars then too are separated out into La Casa, which is a housing trust. And there's a development going on right now that I'm fighting very hard to preserve our local dollars for prevention. And they are proposing a minimum of 20% that would have to be budgeted for attorney's fees. I have no problem with that being an eligible cost, but the way it is stated right now, those monies would have to be budgeted and if not spent, they could not be reallocated. And that's just not right. It's just not right. So they're having, they've formed a new meeting, a new, excuse me, committee that's meeting tomorrow. That's La Casa on Housing Prevention. I don't remember the exact name. It's, and they're meeting tomorrow for the first time. And then on September 17th, the La Casa Board is going to be voting on the formal adoption of their guidelines. And I dearly, dearly hope that someone gets some common sense. And if this measure or the attorney's fees provision is in there that, and we don't spend it because for the San Gabriel Valley or San Gabriel Council of Governments, our data does not show that we need to be spending that kind of money on attorney's fees, that we would at least be able to reallocate the monies if they weren't spent. Only makes sense to me, but, oh, well. But going back then to, I just want to thank our Monrovia team, whether that be the library, our community services, our, and other, our nonprofits, Monrovia Reads, our city attorney, our city manager, but these colleagues here sitting on the dais, that we work together as a team for our community and come together to find ways to support one another. And what we, the things that we can do and how we can support each other. And I'll just reiterate what Tamla was talking about. We have a great local resource, our Immigration Resource Center, which people can avail themselves. You don't have to be personally involved in the immigration process, but you can come out and find out they have lots of workshops and things like that. They have fundraisers. But how we can come together and support one another. And at any rate, I just, it's, it's been a, it's been a hard month. And a nice thing I did, I'm also on the Regional Housing Trust, but I went to a groundbreaking for a project that's being, some of the funding is coming from our San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. It's for 75 units in Pomona, Prisma Loft. And there's also another one coming up soon as well. But yes, the, the housing and affordable housing and homeless issues are just an ongoing, they're an ongoing dilemma. And our homeless meetings from the San Gabriel Valley COG will start up again tomorrow. We have meet, we have reports coming forward from the Department of Mental Health and also a report on the housing, the homeless count. But anyway, I'm kind of rambling here. I apologize for that. Excuse me, I'm, I'm sniffling here. I did want to ask, our MAP leadership, I meant to ask you, Larry, that maybe you knew. I know that on our MAP Leadership Academies, our adult one will go forward, their first meeting is, not the adult one either?
No.
Neither one, okay?
No, we're going to, so if I, if I could, we, because of the timing of our application closing date for the youth program, we weren't able to do as much outreach in the schools as we would like to, particularly at the beginning of the school year. And plus, everybody's just busy with back-to-school activities. We did not get a very, we did not get many applications for the youth program. We're going to postpone both the youth and the adult program to give us a few extra weeks. It'll probably be through the end of this month so that we can just do some more recruiting and promotions and try to promote the MAP Leadership Academies for both youth and adults. Hopefully it also helps us bring in some more adult leaders as well. But specifically, we're doing this because we want to make sure we get a good number of youth.
Great, well, that's wonderful. I knew about the, the youth one, but not the adult. So we'll look forward to that and we can really push that out and hopefully, because it's an absolutely fantastic program, another one of the things I think we can all be very proud of. I did want to mention a couple of things, things that are, give us a lot of hope and there are happy things about our youth. I happen to have been, my husband and I went, attended on August 24th at the Trask Scout Reservation. There's a gal, a friend of ours, who's worked for the Scouts for years and years and years and our daughters went to school together. And at the last minute, she called me up and asked me to go to the Greater Los Angeles Scouting STEM Shoot Award Day. And it also highlighted badges in composite materials, space exploration and aviation. But we got to shoot off little rockets up there at Trask. And when I told my husband we were going to go up to Trask to shoot off rockets, he goes, are you crazy? We just spent millions of dollars in Canyon Park and you're going to shoot off rockets? And I said, well, now that you do, you know, you mention it, that doesn't sound very good. And so I contacted him and it was all compressed air. But it was, it was a lot of fun, a lot of scouts up there. What they've done, they also have spent, I don't know the exact price tag, but they had to renovate Trask, the reservation up there in a huge way as well. So, but scouting is live and well at Trask and they're doing great things with the young men and women and training them for the future. So it was, it was very positive. Also had the opportunity as a guest of Foothill Transit to attend the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership Lunch Meeting with Gil Cisneros. And he highlighted the, his committee appointments supporting small business and hoped to bring him, he really, really was hitting it home and he wants business to invite him into their businesses to know more about him and so, more about them. So really going to push hard to get him to come out and see some of the great things that we're doing here in Monrovia, including the Adult School and also all the technology jobs and things that we have here in organizations. I know that Edward and I also, we attended the swearing-in, public swearing-in of Sasha Perez. She didn't have hers like it would have normally been done no later than January, but because of the fires, Sasha Perez is our state senator. And so we just recently, that was just, it was at PCC just a couple of Saturdays ago. And I wrote way too many notes on my, oh, I did want to say, this is another positive thing. I don't have the specific data, but it is just, when I talk at these homeless meetings about we need to deal with prevention, prevention, we need to get, intervene much earlier. We are reactionary and we're always putting the Band-Aid on the end and we're not doing enough for prevention. Well, Monrovia Reads supported a program of Zoophonics and paid for the books and things, the materials in our Canyon Early Learning Center kids. And they recently tested them and the, the results were amazing after they'd been a part of this, of Zoophonics. And so we are giving them the ability to really step off and start out school in a much better position with the reading skills that they need. And so I'm very excited to hear about the advancements we're making there and all the things we do in our, our library. And so with that, you, truly, 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 you have our commitment that we will continue on in our following up on the immigration issues. Again, we have local resources through the Immigration Resource Center that are very valuable. And with that, I, we do not have any administrative reports this evening. I want to thank my husband for attending the meeting this evening. That was a, he didn't tell me he was, he was coming. So at any rate, thank you for coming this evening. And with that, I think we've, yeah, and the Fountain of the Falls, I, I hope I'm back at the fountain by nine o'clock for the awards thing.
Mayor Chevlin?
Yes?
There was one more thing on your end for the voting delegates.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. Just a little discombobulated tonight. See, honey, get me off Lester.
You blew her mind.
Under, under my report, a designation of a voting delegate for the 2025 League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. And all five of us will be attending that meeting. I will say that you have, I, I don't know, they don't have an agenda yet for any voting items, but there are some general voting requirements, I mean, in terms of budget and elections and things like that, officers. And so you do need to be able to, oh, no, they, I don't know that they have it at the end. I think they have it during the middle of the, it's during, it's during the conference. So do we have?
I did it last time.
Edward, you want?
I don't think I've done it yet.
Okay, well.
I haven't done it either.
Okay, well, Tamla, in terms of seniority then, if you would like to be the voting delegate for, for the league, unless there's any objections to that, then we'll have our Mayor Pro Tem as the, do we have to vote on it?
There's also, no, I'm sorry. I just want to point out, there's also two alternates. We can assign up to two alternates.
Oh, well, you can be the alternate if, if something.
Edward, go ahead.
So, well, Sergio, just in case, hey. We have had those situations where the, the, the person that designated voting delegate could not make it. So anyway, so we will have, Tamla will be our voting delegate and Edward and Sergio will be our alternates. Okay, then, now, without any further ado, then our next scheduled meeting here is Tuesday, September 16th, 7:30 PM, right here in these council chambers. And with that, we are adjourned. And again, we do, our hearts and prayers go out to the, to the family, what's that, Roberto Carlos Montoya Valdez. And with that, we are adjourned at 9:17. Thank you.
Thank you.